Good evening and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Monday, January 25th, 2021, Jobs Development Authority. Welcome in roll call.
Weigel? Docler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Cavani? Mr. Cavani, are you still on? Sandy?
Here.
Bean? And Bochensky?
Here.
We have a call.
Mr. Weigel is on as well. He's waiting to be elevated to panelist.
Item two, JDA action items, 2.1 Corporate Center 2, Kitsona.
Good evening, thank you Chairman Mock. As you may recall, this item was brought to the JDA but tabled on the 4th of January. A little history, Kitsona's lease at the Corporate Center expired at the end of last year, and there was a one-month extension while their proposal to extend their lease was discussed. Kitsona's original proposal was to pay an all-in rent of $2,000 a month and $500 a month towards their outstanding balance. The Growth Fund Committee established a subcommittee to assist with the resolution of this, and that committee, the recommendation is summarized in your staff report, but their recommendation was basically to double that monthly payment. When this was pulled at the JDA on January 4th, it was pulled due to Kitsona's attorney contacting Dan Gaustad, our city attorney, with the idea that they could not meet the recommendation and would like to submit a counterproposal. Basically, they proposed to settle. Ultimately, that settlement offer was to settle for approximately 20 cents on the dollar, similar to the settlement that had been approved for the Ann Love rent situation. Based on Kitsona's financial position and Mr. Gaustad's review of their financial data, he did recommend accepting that settlement and drafted a settlement agreement and promissory note to support it. The upshot of that agreement would be that the approximate 20 cent on the dollar settlement would amount to $23,160. That would be repaid at the rate of $1,000 a month, starting March 1st of this year and continuing through March of 2023. Kitsona would be allowed to remain in the current facility through the end of February to allow them to wind down their business. But otherwise, they would then, assuming all the settlement amounts were paid, then they would have no further commitment to the JDA, and the matter would be closed. As I said, Mr. Gaustad did draft all the agreements, and if you have any questions, I would refer those to you. Otherwise, we're asking for authorization to accept this agreement and get it executed.
Any comments or questions?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second? Do we need a public hearing for this, or can we just advance it with a vote?
We don't need a public hearing.
Oh, since it does involve financial data, we do advertise it as a public hearing. So yes, if you could open the public hearing, please.
Let's open the public hearing. Seeing none, let's close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 2.2 Startup Grand Forks Loan Program. Looks like there's an item A, program update modification.
Yes, thank you Chairman Mock. I would like to point out that typically there is at least a week's lag between Growth Fund Committee meeting and bringing items like this forward to the JDA. Since the Kitsona item was very time-sensitive and did need to come before the end of the month, we did add all these items and advertise them as a, you know, through our public notice requirement. However, if anyone feels that this is rushed, we could certainly table those items and bring them back next week. If everybody's okay with proceeding in this kind of accelerated fashion, I'll go into 2.2A, which is the startup program modification. In this case, the startup program was a pilot program that was launched in 2017. Last September, the JDA agreed to make it a permanent part of the portfolio. When it was initiated, the funding ratios were 50% JDA, 25% Bank of North Dakota through the North Dakota Development Fund in a convertible equity arrangement, and then 25% owner-borrower equity. When this was made permanent last September, North Dakota Development Fund had opted out of the program due to a number of factors, and we were looking at some sort of arrangement with BND to fill that funding gap. BND has been very supportive of the program and offered a few options, but their requirements as a lending institution were not really compatible with what the JDA was able to do, both from a kind of a day-to-day administrative standpoint in terms of getting those loans posted and allocated immediately, as well as some concerns about the JDA being put in the condition of being a custodian of North Dakota or Bank of North Dakota funds and what that might do to our accounting and financial reporting. So, the recommendation is to just supplement our original $100,000 a year soft cap with additional funding to bring the JDA portion of these projects up to 75% instead of 50%, basically fund the development funds portion in-house, and proceed with that methodology for this program going forward. We're also, assuming you agree with that approach, we would ask that the two loans that were approved when we were still kind of in that transitional period between development funds, allow us to revise those funds and amend them so that this additional funding would come from the JDA, and the loan documents would reflect that. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, but that is the recommendation, kind of that two-part thing, authorizes to change this program so that the funding would be 75% local funding, 25% from the applicant, and then to retroactively make that methodology apply to the last two loans that were approved.
I'll move approval for that modification and update.
We have a motion from Mr. Weber. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Bochensky. Comments or questions? Any discussion? None? Any discussion from folks online? Do we need a public hearing for this since it involves?
Not for this particular one, but for the applications that will follow with Mr. Baumbock.
Okay, so without the need for a public hearing, if there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So, item D, application from Software 701 LLC.
Hello, members of the Authority. I'm Brandon Baumbock, Director of Business Development at the Grand Forks Region Economic Development Corporation. Very excited to bring forward this project application, Software 701, as in particular, if you know me, I get excited when a product is born out of the 701 coworking space where two individuals who were doing their own business ventures came together and created an innovative company. Those are Noah Nordlin and Kyle Solarood. They came together and developed a streamlined approach to online marketing. It's a suite of tools to target YouTube and Google Ads through a proprietary algorithm sold as a software as a solution. They've come forward here to make a request to the Startup Grand Forks Program to grow what they've already had as a promising number of subscribers to the next step in their business, to help scale the business and respond to demand for the product. It'd be used primarily for marketing, advertising, and for the development, software development of the application. This request is a total project expense or expected cost of $40,000, where they would bring $10,000 of their own equity, and with the changes just made to the program, $30,000 would be lent from the Growth Fund. This is at 5%, 60 months, with the first year deferred both principal and interest. She's gone through all the steps of the program, Small Business Development Center, through the Loan Committee, and most recently earlier tonight, the Growth Fund Committee approving. Noah, I understand, is online if there are any questions, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Mr. Weber. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Sandy. Further discussion?
I think we need a public hearing, too.
Yep. Was there any further discussion from the council? No. Let's open the public hearing. Seeing none, let's close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item C, application from Amy's Place LLC.
Thank you. Another exciting project, Amy's Place is being brought forward by Amy Burns, who is also on the call in case there are any questions. She's looking to establish a restaurant at the Grand Forks Air Force Base at the base exchange. Over recent years, some of the service to our airmen, service members, but airmen and women have been decreased, in large part due to workforce. Amy's bringing a solution to that by providing a restaurant with homemade entrees, sides, desserts, and soups to start over the lunch hour, with plans to expand into breakfast and other dining options in the evening. The loan will be helped to start this up, primarily with expenses related to fitting up the space, purchase of equipment and cookware, and as well as the startup inventory. She's also looking to utilize the program at $40,000 total project costs, $30,000 loan coming from the Growth Fund at 5% over 60 months, with first year deferred both principal and interest. She, too, has met all the requirements of the program, gaining approval from the Loan Committee and the Growth Fund Committee just earlier this evening. Again, she's on the call if there are any questions, and I'd be happy to stand for any as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Any questions, comments? Otherwise, I'd entertain motions.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Without anything further, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move away, Chair.
Motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2.1, welcome in roll call.
Weigel?
Here.
Docler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Cavani?
Sandy? Here.
Bean?
We have a call.
Thank you. Under item two, discussion items, 2.0 Legislative Update. Mr. Bernstrom, good evening.
Thank you, Council President Sandy, and members of the committee as a whole. So, we have a couple of items here when it comes to legislative update. I'll just give an overview of things we have coming up this week, and also some items that are, starting to see some results from our testimony. So, this week, we have several bills providing testimony on. Mr. Paul Hodex provided testimony this morning on a tax exemption bill in support of that bill at the state legislature, it's House Bill 1277. Mr. Hodex is also going to be providing some testimony in opposition to, there are two separate tax break bills for those 65 and over that's going to be later this week. That's House Bill 1372 and Senate Bill 2270. Of note, we're not providing testimony, but in our meeting with the League of Cities on Friday, there was discussion, there's these wastewater surveillance bills. One of them completely prohibits it, and another one says, well, you can do it if you do a public hearing at the local entity. So, we're opposing the prohibit and supporting the public hearing at the local entity. And then, we are providing testimony on Senate Bill 2042. It is a bill regarding PERS, our retirement program here at the city. Maureen Storsted will have more on that bill here in a little bit, as well as information on a bill regarding infrastructure fees in lieu of special assessments. We'll have Maureen talk about that. And then also, we are providing testimony in opposition to House Bill 1222 regarding non-conforming structures, and we have a bullet underneath Legislative Update where we'll have Mr. Brooks and Mr. Baseflue come up and talk about the impacts of that bill. And then, just quickly, we've provided testimony here now for a couple of weeks. We've provided testimony in opposition to a tax cap bill, House Bill 1192. That came out of committee with a do not pass. Same thing, an assessment bill, assessment of property, we provided testimony in opposition to that, that came out of committee with a do not pass. And then, Mr. Gaustad provided testimony in support of House Bill 1130, that's regarding municipal court rulings, and that passed the floor this afternoon. So, with that, I'm going to turn it to Maureen to talk about Senate Bill 2042 and House Bill 1419.
Thank you, John. President Sandy, members of the committee, as Mr. Bernstrom stated, there's actually a couple Indy PERS pension-related bills out there that we're monitoring, and last week, House Bill 1209, Tanji and I together provided some joint written opposition to that. That bill would be directly tied to actual results, so it would be a fluctuating amount we'd have to pay into that pension, and that caused concerns for us with budgeting and planning. Senate Bill 2042, as John just briefed with you, is another Indy PERS pension bill. That one looks to increase the contribution by 5.12%. We will be providing opposition testimony on that bill this Friday. We are in support of incremental increases for that plan to get that fully funded, but we just feel these two bills in particular are just a bit too aggressive for us with the budget impacts. And I do not have the bill number in front of me, but there is another one with a little more, smaller incremental increases to get that funded. The other one to notate that Mr. Bernstrom briefly stated was the Street Maintenance Utility Fee Bill that would be a replacement to special assessments for street maintenance projects. We are continuing to monitor that one and contemplating, we're still looking more into that. It looks to be a replacement, not just another tool, so we want to have, we're going to have some more discussions with other cities on that and continue to monitor. With that, I did also just want to bring up that we've had these legislative updates. Each council meeting, we plan to bring forward on each call as well a legislative update for you to keep you informed on that. I'm going to turn over to Meredith at this time.
Thank you, Maureen. Attached to your agenda is a letter of support request from Deborah Johnson from Prairie Harvest Mental Health. Deb and Prairie Harvest have been great partners with community development through the CDBG program, and as that letter states, there's some concern with cuts to the Department of Health and Human Services budget upwards of $1.4 million that could significantly impact her organization, as well as others in the community. Rather than that support coming from me as a department head that knows the great work she does, we thought it made more sense for you to hear as a council what the issue is, and then that support could come from her. You could hear it from her, and the support would come from you. And so, with that, I would like to introduce Deb Johnson, who's the Executive Director of Prairie Harvest Mental Health.
Sorry, you're muted, ma'am. Deb, hello?
Deb, you're muted.
Yeah, I'll start over again. I had a little practice going on there. Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and council members. I'm Deb Johnson, CEO of Prairie Harvest Mental Health. We've been a community partner and a private nonprofit organization in Grand Forks since 1992, and we've developed a full continuum of care for adults with serious mental illness. Included in that continuum of care are 42 units of permanent supportive housing. One of our facilities is located just down the block from City Hall, next to the Polka Dotted House. It's a nine-plex, and that was developed, have all of our facilities been developed with some type of funding from HUD that has come through the Urban Development Office. So, we've been partners in developing this full continuum, like I said, since 1992. In the state, we've been, I partner with Northeast Human Service Center and have been under contract for program services to support these permanent supportive housing units that we have. So, we've been in the budget each year, and it has grown over the years to support. In some of our units, we have as little as a few hours a day of support staff, all the way through to, two of our facilities have 24-hour permanent supportive housing services attached to them. The state has been working on an amendment to Medicaid, and it's called the 1915I Amendment. And what it does is it allows for providers to bill Medicaid and be reimbursed for some of their services. What's a struggle for us is we've been on a daily rate with our permanent supportive housing, and this new 1915I has the reimbursement where it is face-to-face with the clients, and then there's some criteria for how they are potentially approved to be reimbursed by Medicaid for the services. There are a lot of unknowns to this, and this budget cut came to us as a surprise on January 5th, so we've just known about it for a short time. And the share of our cut, well, they've cut funds for most of these programs across the state a 50%, and ours would be $1,414,800 for biennium. So, we are, I'll be testifying tomorrow about the challenges to, for us to get the infrastructure up and running, and to have our staff trained, and to know the mechanics of this 1915I Amendment without it affecting the services for the people who need our support the worst. So, I'm just, you know, simply asking you for a letter of support. You know, and we'll fight the fight. We have some good support behind us. We are not asking them, you know, to double dip. We will use what we need as our system builds. So, with that, if I could get a letter of support. Pardon me.
Thank you for that.
It would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you for that great information. Any council members that disagree with writing a letter of support? Hearing none, Ms. Richards, is that something that you would draft? Do you want the council, us to sign it individually, council president to sign it, the mayor? What are your thoughts?
If you are comfortable with me drafting it, I will work with Mayor Bochensky to get it signed on behalf of the city.
Very good. Again, anyone disagree with that idea?
Just to comment, if I may.
Yeah, Ms. Weber.
Prairie Harvest is not the only provider in our community affected by these Human Service Center cuts. There is much need across the state, small communities and larger communities such as our own. I would hope that this letter could include a request that the state fund all of the human service centers at levels that will more adequately fund the needs of our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And Ms. Mock?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if this was something we should add to our priorities for tracking, since it's a budget item that might last beyond, you know, just a length.
In relation to that, if I may, I'm sorry for interrupting, Ms. Mock.
Ms. Weber?
Thank you, President Sandy. House Bill 1012, I believe, is the one of direct relevance. In addition to this letter, I would ask that the Legislative Committee bring this up with the League of Cities. This is affecting communities across the state. It's often presented that it's the counties that are supposed to provide social services, but cities often pay the price when these funding cuts hit.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. And Ms. Richards, do you have the direction you're looking for?
Yes, thank you. I can draft the letter accordingly.
Very good.
And now?
Greetings.
Thanks, Meredith. President Sandy, Vice President Mock. What we're going to do is I'm going to give you a brief synopsis of House Bill 1222, why the Legislative Committee, as well as the City of Grand Forks, is proposing to oppose the bill, and then Mr. Brooks will give a brief example of what could happen if this bill came to fruition. So, House Bill 11, excuse me, House Bill 1222 is just titled simply "Nonconforming Structures." The CD of Grand Forks, Article 4 of our Planning and Zoning Ordinance actually addresses nonconforming uses. So, within nonconforming uses is a nonconforming structure. Let's see, there's nonconforming structures, nonconforming uses, there's, or am I losing it here? I'm sorry. Nonconforming lots, nonconforming use of land and structures, and nonconforming characteristics of use. What this bill intentionally does, it really ties our hands. You know, to put it a high-level synopsis, it's going to take away local control. It takes away the ability, when we adopt our building codes, when we adopt our planning and zoning codes, and it also takes away the ability to work with the individual homeowners in the neighborhoods themselves. There's potentially a monetary penalty to this if we're not able to do something where it states that we'd have to pay fair market value. There's a lot of ambiguous verbiage in here, meaning that it's up for interpretation. So, anytime that something's going to come forward to us, it's going to go to Mr. Gaustad. We're going to have to continue to interpret it. What does this mean? What does this mean? This bill is House Bill 1165, I think, last biennium, and it may even came to be biennium prior to that. So, my recommendation is that we continue to oppose this bill, but I'd like Ryan to give an example of exactly how it would affect us.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the one example that we've used typically is during the last session when this came forward, we had a house fire on Fourth Avenue South. It was a lot that's about 1,400 square feet in size, which is the size of most houses. The house was about three foot off of the other house that was next to it. We were fortunate that both structures didn't go up in the fire. Under this bill, what would happen is that somebody could rebuild under that same footprint, and that's something that we really don't want to have done without input from the local folks. So, in this case, we'd like to have the local control. Nine times out of 10, when there's a fire, yes, the house is probably in good shape. It meets setbacks, and there isn't a life safety issue, but it's under certain criteria. We do have problems, and that's when we want to take a look, and we don't want to just automatically allow that structure to be rebuilt. So that's the concern from the local side. That and the monetary piece as well that Brandon brought up. So with that, we'd certainly entertain any questions that you may have on the bill.
Mr. Sandy, I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Weigle.
My question would be, have we reached out to the local legislator that sponsored this bill to talk about any of these concerns? Or whether or not they'd be willing to amend the bill or anything along those lines?
I have not. I know a previous, previous time, I think, the previous city planner had, I believe, spoken with him. But I wouldn't be able to guarantee that either. But I know he had reached out. But I don't know if they had ever spoken.
Mr. Berstrom?
Yeah, just to confirm, last session, it was House Bill 1165 with the same local sponsor. We talked with the legislator at that time. The reason it just came up now is we found out on Friday that it was scheduled for this week. So we're just getting our stuff together as far as testimony and whatnot. And the question was raised, that's why it's before you today.
Thank you, Mr. Berstrom. Any other, anyone else have comments? I certainly am a big fan of having local control. In all instances, except for this one, I have sided with keeping local control within our community. I believe, however, and this has nothing to do with the people that are currently employed by the city of Grand Forks, I'm concerned about sometime in the future, people that are employed by the city of Grand Forks having a different opinion as Mr. Brooks, for example, being heavy-handed with people that want to rebuild their structures. In the example that you provided, I would see no reason why that person shouldn't be allowed to rebuild their home, because it's their home and their property. And I understand that it doesn't conform with our current zoning. But it seemed to sit there fine all the time up until it had the fire. And as long as it meets all of the local codes, meaning your electrical code and your plumbing codes and so on, when they rebuild it, I just have a real hard time with the city of Grand Forks, for example, telling the people that own that property that they can't rebuild the home that they lived in prior to having that fire. And I understand what you're saying. And I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying that I fundamentally disagree with that. I believe that if I owned that home, I should be able to rebuild it. And that's okay if everyone else disagrees with me. Yes, Mr. Gossett?
I just want to make sure that that is, and I've just briefly looked at the legislative, because I was, it was not around over the course of the weekend. And I got some correspondence from the League of Cities over the weekend on this particular bill. But I think what you're, there is a distinction between a nonconforming structure, which means that maybe they're not in compliance with the electrical code or the plumbing code at the time, and a nonconforming use, which may be that they're not in conformance with the use surrounding them, the zoning use. And so there is a distinction, I think, that's being made. And here, you could have a nonconforming structure that's rebuilt, that doesn't, still doesn't comply with the current code. And that may be the difficulty. The other thing that, as I was reading it today, as I got back, the other thing that struck me is the compensation that could have to be paid here as a fair market value. And I want to look at this more in the next day or two. But it almost leads to a condemnation-type of action where we're having to pay a property owner fair market value for the property if he's not, and I think the language is not authorized. And I'm not exactly sure what that means. So I want to dig a little deeper in it. And I'd love to have a conversation with you about your position, President Sandy, about that and the nuances. But I wanted to raise that with you, because you brought up an excellent point as to what this legislation might mean.
Thank you, Mr. Gossett. Yeah, Ms. Mock.
Mr. Brooks, you can have exemptions and variances within the zoning code, correct? So if we have uses that, you know, may be grandfathered in structurally or by use, there is a process for variance. So this isn't as if, you know, our current rules are so rigid that you don't have any way to allow for improvements. Is that correct?
That's correct. So I think that was that point, that by having local control, we can certainly work with those ways to allow a rebuild to happen, maybe getting it off of a property line, those types of things, that we could entertain those discussions as part of the local control.
So as part of your, so in your example with the house that was on fire, is part of the issue that within our local control, you could allow them to rebuild, but also enforce certain coding and rules that have changed since that house was originally built?
Yeah.
What would this do in comparison to what we currently have versus if this were in place?
Yeah, I think this gets into a little bit of the, so there's getting the setbacks where they should be, but also getting the structure up to code, electrical code, those types of things. So both of those, our intent, when it's rebuilt, would meet all of those things. And if the setback needs to be varied, there is a process for that. There's notification that happens, those types of things, so.
And this rule, if this were enacted, what would this do in comparison?
It would just mean that they would be able to rebuild as, in the same footprint that they were before.
When you say the same footprint, do you mean to the same building standards as it was built? Or to the current building standards?
Footprint. So when I say footprint, it literally means it could be rebuilt on that same distance from the setback to the property line.
Right.
Under the current code. If this was approved by the state, it would take away that control from the local government.
Right. It would keep us from enforcing our own setbacks from property lines.
In that situation.
But it doesn't allow somebody to build a structure that, for example, doesn't meet current electrical codes.
I'd have to dig into that a little bit more. I didn't read it that way. But I would defer to Mr. Gossett, who I don't think has had that time yet to take a look.
Yeah, no, I understand.
President Sandy, again, it's very vague. We could assume that that's what it means. You know, if a house goes down, we build a new house. My intent is that house gets built and built per code. But when there's, we get into the percentage aspect of things, the 50%, and they say, well, we're only doing 50%. Well, we don't have to update this, don't have to update this. It could get very iffy. I think one thing to remember that's throughout the bill, Section 5 is a really key indicator. Talks about, notwithstanding the sections prior to that 1, 2, and 3, the local authority may create a less restrictive ordinance or regulation. And that sentence in itself is really what's tying us. As Mr. Brooks stated, it's our intent to work with our property owners any which way that we can. We have boards set up, you know, they'll come in, visit with myself, with Mr. Brooks. This basically says 1, 2, 3, or 4 you're going to do. Otherwise, you know, they're going to have to tell you no, and we're going to have to pay them a monetary amount. So everything that's in this bill, we already have underneath Article 4 of the Planning and Zoning Ordinances. I feel that we're meeting the need of everything that you're asking for. Of course, Mr. Gossett's going to dig into it a little bit deeper. But again, I feel that it's important to stay within our lane and keep local control on this. And I think, Mr. Sandy, once you visit with Mr. Gossett, we'll be able, and I can jump in on that as well, where it's not necessarily taking away any rights or anything like that. The ultimate, when we have codes, when we have ordinances, it's for the safety and health and welfare of the public. And without, with our hands tied, that's really tough to do.
Right. But this is where we're going to fundamentally disagree.
Yes, absolutely.
And it's okay. I don't fault you for your opinion. In the situation that Mr. Brooks gave, if the lot's already 1,400 square feet, and they're three feet from the property line, and we're going to tell them they have to go back seven feet, and whatever it is from the front, you're going to essentially make a lot where they can't actually build a structure that anyone can live in. And in my opinion, you're taking their property from them. And in which case, that's my point, is I disagree with that. So I understand what you're saying, and nobody wants to allow people to build structures that aren't safe. And certainly, I don't want row houses that can ignite fires that burn the whole city down. Nobody wants that. I'm just, I struggle with the, if there's ever a situation where we're going to make it so someone can't rebuild their property, I disagree with that. And I do, I just, I have a real issue with it. No, I'm not saying I agree with this bill, because I haven't studied the nuance of the bill. And certainly, our city attorney should look into that. But, and again, I'm all for local control. I just disagree with taking somebody's ability to rebuild their property away from them. That is all. And I think it's important that I tell people that. And if people disagree, I'm okay with that. Ms. Mock?
Mr. Gossett, is number out of six, what you were concerned about, that the county shall compensate the owner for fair market value, is that the portion you are going to look more into?
Yes, that's the provision that.
And it says county, but are you concerned that that might be city? In case of a structure in city limits?
I'm sorry, if you scroll down, there is a county, city, and township in there, verbatim.
Okay, okay.
Forty-seven is municipal.
Okay, I was just looking at the county.
So in the interest of time, unless others have other input.
I'll make a motion we oppose.
You make the motion we would oppose. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Weber. With that in mind, we certainly would be interested in further input from the city attorney. And if we can even suggest language that would make it something that would make you happy and that would make our city attorney happy, we can provide that to the folks that are moving that forward.
President Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Gossett, and I'm guessing you would have already done this anyway, but in addition to other clarifying points, could you also look at the fiscal impact to the state and to our community? To the extent that you can do that reasonably, potential fiscal impacts?
Yeah, I think the, I can certainly do that. I think there was a fiscal note that was attached. I haven't looked at it at all, as to what the fiscal impact would be. And what I will do is, I think Mr. Brooks has prepared a, some draft. I'd review it and then share it with the council members as to some of the concerns with respect to the language. And maybe raising issues the way it's drafted, the legislation, and to address President Sandy's concerns about allowing somebody to rebuild and what that might mean under the legislation as it currently sits.
Great. I'm on record. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, aye. Motion carries. Mr. Weigle, were you for or against?
I was against.
Against. Yeah, and Mr. Berstrom?
To that point, are there any other legislative questions from?
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to make a quick comment, Mr. Sandy.
Mr. Weigle, go on.
I guess what I would just comment is that we get these bills, and we're obviously in the very early part of the legislative session. And we get these bills to talk about. And this happened last year, is the bill shows up in front of us, but we have zero contact with our legislator that sponsors the bill from our community. Happened last year, and now it's happening this year. And every year, I heard here from our Legislative Committee and our legislators that we're Team Grand Forks. But I don't know of many teams that don't talk to each other and provide feedback to bills. So I would like in the future that when we talk about these bills, that we don't make a decision on night one, but that we talk about the bill, have a good conversation like we did tonight, and then, and save it for the next week so we have time to reach out to those people that are sponsoring these bills from our Grand Forks community so we can get feedback and provide that to them from city staff, like I'm sure we're doing. But I think we need to work together more with our local legislators to keep that Team Grand Forks spirit going into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. I'm sure our team will do the best they can.
President Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Weber.
The Friday afternoon city legislative committee meetings are public. Certainly, all council members are welcome, as is the rest of the public. And the actions of that committee are based upon the priorities approved by this body. And we're in regular contact, both through Team Grand Forks and directly through the city's Legislative Committee with our legislators. They're very busy, they don't always return our calls. This is one that we have opposed for two sessions now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any other comments for the good of the order? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Berstrom. Item 2.1, Request to transfer Class 1 alcoholic beverage license from El Rocco Lounge to the Rock Bottle Shop, and request to change in the beverage license class from Class 1 to Class 2 alcoholic beverage license. Ms. Dorsted?
Yes, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. As you stated, the Finance Department has received an application for the transfer of a Class 1. Class 1 is a general on- and off-sale alcohol license from the El Rocco, and transfer this to the Rock Bottle Shop, which is located at 1730 13th Avenue North. They further wish to change the class of their license that they hold from a Class 1 to a Class 2, which will be off-sale only. The El Rocco has held a Class 1 license. They decided to sell their business. They've notified us. They wish to transfer their license to the Rock Bottle Shop. This has been submitted, the application and fee, application fee has been paid. We do have a representative here tonight if you should have any questions. The Rock plans to operate with off-sale only, requesting this change of license from, again, a Class 1 to a Class 2. This does require the approval of several city departments, including city attorney, police, fire, health inspections, and also payment of transfer fees. This does require city council approval for this transfer and change in class. And so we bring this forward to you and recommend that you move this forward to council for approval.
Thank you for that. Any comments or questions for Ms. Dorsted?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigle, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. On 2.2, 2021 CDBG, Community Services Grant Programs and Allocation of CDBG Community Something Round 3.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Yes, it's that time of year where I'm bringing the first look at the funding recommendations for these kind of confusing pots of money. This year, we do have our regular 2021 CDBG funding, our 2021 Community Services Grant Program. This is local funding from sales tax out of 2163. And the last round of the CARES Act funding through HUD. That's CDBG CV for COVID. So we've allocated these all simultaneously through one competitive application process. But as your staff report kind of breaks it down, we do have, the budgeted funding is coming from, we're estimating $450,000. That is CDBG entitlement direct from HUD. $190,000 of locally generated CDBG program income, that would be related to the Corporate Center. Then the local funding for our Community Services Grant Program at 128 285. And then that COVID funding, the last round, is just shy of $300,000. We also include our HomeSense revolving loan fund, which is a housing rehab program. We just show that as an in-and-out because it is completely self-funded. And we estimate that it will take in approximately $125,000 in loan payments. And then, for ease of budgeting, that would be the amount of new loans that would go out through new rehab programs. In any case, the deadline for applications was January 11. Thirty-one applications were received. As usual, we had requests that greatly exceeded available funding, with our available funding just shy of 1.2 million and requests of over $3 million. Through our Community Advisory Committee, the membership is shown on your staff report. We did follow our standard process, even though we met via Zoom, and went through a yes-no vote. That's meant to kind of winnow out the least popular or least impactful applications in the opinion of the Advisory Committee. That eliminated nine. The remaining applications were then ranked by the Community Advisory Committee. eliminated nine. The remaining applications were then ranked by the Community Advisory Committee. And the, the second sheet of, of your staff report kind of shows the outcome of that. So in terms of the operational support, the highest ranking projects were recommended for full funding. Then as we went down the list, 80% funding for the majority, down to, I believe, 60% for the lowest ranking, to fully allocate the funding between both the CDBG program and the local CSG funding. So staff takes the advisory committee's rankings and then assigns these dollar amounts to them. In terms of bricks and mortar, we fully funded the top two ranking applications, then the third ranking applications, which was a, a pretty extensive project at the Mission to stabilize their masonry basically and repaint the old portion of the building. That was fully funded until we ran out of funding with the recommendation that they be designated as a second-tier project. And if we do get additional funding or that contingency holds, then additional funding would go to that project up to the maximum amount requested. For the CARES Act funding, once we went through the yes/no vote, we didn't have as much in request as we did have available funding, which is quite unusual for us. But we did contact each of the agencies to ensure that if additional funding were available, would they be able to use it. And so with the first three agencies, they're at approximately 160% of requested funding. And then the last agency didn't really have the ability to scale up. And so they're basically getting everything they asked for with a little bit of a bump just for rounding to, to get to the full allocation amount available. Again, standard process with the Community Advisory Committee and the ranking as we have done many years. We do have a little unusual funding mix, but it has gone pretty smoothly considering COVID and, and all its ramifications. So what we're asking for tonight is that no real action. We would ask you to set March 1st as the public hearing date. We will then, in the interim, open a required 30-day public comment period. And then at that point on March 1st, we would have drafts of our 2021 annual, annual action plan. We have to amend our 2020 annual action plan to deal with that COVID money. And then at that point on March 1st, be final action, and we go forward with grant applications for all these fine agencies.
Any questions for Ms. Richards? Or anyone want to set the public hearing?
I'll move with a public hearing date.
Moved by Mark. Is there a second? Somebody online?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Richards, for all you do. Item 2.3, Arts Regrant Program Annual Report. Mr. Conlon?
Good evening. This and the following, I am involved two sort of longer-running programs with the City of Grand Forks. That's the Arts Regrant and Special Events Regrant Programs. You might recall back in 2016 with the Mayor's Vibrancy Initiative at that time, resulted in a few recommendations that the city work with partner organizations in the community to administer those, those separate programs. So for the first one, the Arts Regrant Program, we have the Community Foundation who, back in 2018, after a one-year temporary city wed process, came forward with a proposal to administer the Arts Regrant Program. So each year around this time, we come forward with a, a annual report of the previous year's process, as well as seeking reauthorization for, in this case, the Community Foundation to continue administration of the program for the 2021 year. So I believe we have, if I can find her up there, Becca Baumback with the Community Foundation of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks and Region to just give you that brief report. And then, like I mentioned, we'd be seeking approval for reauthorization for the Community Foundation to administer this program for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Conlon. Ms. Baumback, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy and council members. Thank you for having me. Before I get started, I want to thank you all for your leadership in 2020. It was different and, at most times, a difficult year for our community and particularly our nonprofits. This past year, to address the emergent needs that arose from the pandemic, the Community Foundation activated its nonprofit relief fund, providing over $130,000 to charitable organizations across Grand Forks, Walsh and Hope counties. Besides these funds, we continued the administration of a number of our grant programs, including the Women's Fund and the Arts Regrant Program, as well as grants from over 85 charitable endowments. In total, we distributed just shy of $1 million to charitable organizations in 2020. These sources of support, including the Arts Regrant Program, have been an important part of the lifeline that our local nonprofits have sought during these difficult times. With that said, we are very thankful to you for your ongoing support of the Arts Regrant Program and the support that it has provided year after year to our artistic community and especially this trying year. During your attention to my report, the Community Foundation received over $205,000 in requests and distributed a total of $119,751.39 across all 14 applicant organizations. We utilize an independent panel of five reviewers who score applications based on artistic quality, impact, and organizational capabilities. The final awards are on the third page of your report. Given the circumstances around this past year, the program operated quite smoothly. Of the 14 organizations, we had three grantees that had to significantly alter their programming due to pandemic restrictions, and a number of others requested reporting extensions, of which we worked with them on those. Only one grantee, summer performing arts, also known as SPA, had to return a portion of their grant that they were unable to utilize due to cancellation of their programming. Those dollars will be added to our 2021 allocation for distribution. As I noted in my report, we were very impressed just with the patience and passion and innovation that these grantees displayed this past year, even in the midst of operational and financial hardship. Even though the organizations were not on the front lines, as some may say, they still brought much joy and creativity to households in our community, a touch of normal, if you will, particularly during the spring and summer months when many people were confined to their, their households. Examples of, of these activities included outdoor theater productions in the Alley of the Empire, live stream performances by the North Dakota Ballet Company, and virtual book readings by notable authors from UND's Writers Conference. We hope to be able to continue our partnership with the city with this project and this program going forward. With uncertainties still on the horizon for many of these organizations, we are hoping to pivot the program based, the program in base awards to operational support awards. This will provide greater flexibility for these organizations, many of which aren't sure what their programming is going to be looking like in 2021 due to the pandemic and even with the release of, of some of the vaccinations. Applications will continue to be evaluated, evaluated by an independent committee based on the same criteria. Be happy to take any questions you might have. Otherwise, thank you so much for your support of this program, and we look forward to partnering together in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Baumback. I think on behalf of the City of Grand Forks and the council, we really appreciate the Community Foundation stepping up to help out and, and certainly the review committee for dedicating people that are volunteering to dedicate their time to, to help out the City of Grand Forks and all the arts organizations. Any other, any other comments? Or is there a motion to have the Community Foundation administer the Arts Grant Program for 2021?
I'm moving.
Moved by Ms. Mark, second by Weber. I can read your lips. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Baumback. Item 2.4, Special Events Program Annual Report. Mr. Conlon?
Yes, in a similar vein, as, as a result of the Mayor's Vibrancy Initiative back in 2016, this time for the Special Events Program, the Convention Visitors Bureau, the CVB, they came on 2017 with their own proposal to administer those funds. So we have Julie Rig here to give the 2020 annual report, as well as, again, seeking reauthorization for 2021.
Ms. Rig, thanks for coming downtown tonight. Nice to see you, as always.
Nice to see you all. Thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. This is a little strange. I've, I've never had so few council members up here while I'm talking. As Andy pointed out, we have been managing this program since 2017. We combined it with the event funding program that Visit Greater Grand Forks was already managing at the time. So it was a, it was a good step to make in combining these programs. Were able to provide more funding to those events that need it and really look at each of them and evaluate what is needed for events. Of course, 2020 was a most difficult year for events and anything hospitality-related. But I am happy to report, we did have some successful events. We did start out the year incredibly strong with events, and we're looking at almost a record-breaking year until the pandemic hit. So the program, we continue to use the criteria that the city had in their program, as well as what we had in our program. So the main criteria points are promoting Greater Grand Forks as an entertainment, recreation, and tourism center, the ability to make a significant economic impact, a plan to draw both a local audience as well as non-local attendance, events that make an impact on quality of life for our local residents, events lasting multiple days, and events that do secure sponsorships from additional sources as well. Funding applications are typically reviewed four times a year. However, with the pandemic, we've been reviewing and awarding funds as they come in. And our plan is to continue to do that through at least the first half of 2021. With so many unknowns out there, we want to try to be as flexible for these, these organizations as we can. A lot of these organizations have local, local volunteers planning and managing them. So the more support, the better. In 2020, we had just over $189,000 committed for events. Unfortunately, just over $90,000 were canceled. But we did still have quite a few events that, that did have funding. So there's just over $26,000 left in that. And we will put that towards events in 2021, as the Community Foundation's going to do with the Arts Regrant. We will just put it back into, into events this year. Already, as of January 19th, we've awarded $59,000 for events that are planned for this year. What we're seeing is, we are seeing a lot of cancellations in the first quarter and early second quarter. However, where we're starting to see some strong growth is later in the second quarter, third quarter, and fourth quarter. I think event organizers are cautiously optimistic with the vaccine rolling out. We also do manage an enticement program. That is when we actually promise dollars through the bid process. So that could be an event that we're bidding on for two to three years out. So for events that are planned in Grand Forks this year, so far, we have just over $33,000 committed to those. And of course, we do everything we can to promote these events through our website. And strangely enough, our website did have 2% growth in users in 2020, which 2% isn't huge, but it sure is nice in a pandemic that, that people are actually looking for things to do. We promote it through our blog, promote events through our blogs, social media, e-blast, advertising. And then, of course, we have our complimentary services program in addition to all that. And in 2019, we gave out a value of $333,000 in complimentary services. So those are in-kind services that go in addition to, to the event funding. On the third page of the packet I provided you, you do have a list of the events that we've, that we promised funds for in 2020. The highlighted ones are the ones that did cancel. And then, of course, I included the criteria, the application, the templates that we provide, as well as listings of our services programs for both conventions and sporting tournaments. So you have some idea on the services that we provide as well. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. And again, similar to the Community Foundation, the CVB does excellent work for our community, and I really appreciate that you and the team stepped up to help us with this, with this issue. So any comments or questions for Ms. Rig? Anyone suggest we should continue with the CVB managing our special events programs?
Move approval.
Moved by Ms. Mark. Is there a second? I can't read your lips when you're, when you're, okay, second by Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for coming. Moving right along. Item 2.5, Budget Amendment for the Prairie Dog Funds. Ms. Dorsted?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. Just a little history and timing of budgeting on these Prairie Dog dollars. As you know, in the, as part of the 2019 legislative session, the Prairie Dog House Bill 1066 was approved. And this bill may changes to the oil and gas production tax distribution and provided much-needed funding for municipal infrastructure. With that change, it was estimated that the City of Grand Forks in the biennium was to receive approximately $12 million, coming in two different buckets that would fill up throughout the biennium. We'd included as part of our 2020 budget to receive $2.5 million from the first bucket allocation that had been expected to be received in the fourth quarter of, of 2020, and then with a projection of the remainder to come in, in 2021. Then, of course, things changed in 2020, and we were informed to not expect to, for those buckets to entirely fill. We did, though, receive the $2.5 million, the initial bucket allocation, late in the fourth quarter, as the first bucket did fill. We did not bring a budget amendment to you at the time, as it had been originally budgeted in 2020, so no amendment was needed. We now want to bring those monies forward into the current budget year and, and bring those dollars into 2021 for, available for expenditure. Attached, you have the budget amendment that we are looking for approval. The cash sits in a special revenue fund, a Prairie Dog Fund 2178. And this amendment moves those funds into our Street Infrastructure Fund 4815. In working with city engineer Al Grasser, who is here also for questions, the money is recommended to be used on projects that are listed in the staff report, including the Oscarville paving, Cherry Street Extension, and Belmont Road reconstruction. Future Prairie Dog Funds, we'll incorporate that into the budget process and, and future planning and CIP. But we're gearing all those dollars towards street infrastructure needs. Mr. Grasser and I are here for your questions. Otherwise, we look for approval for the budget amendment.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Sandy, council members. This project is the second of two intersection
improvement projects that engineering has proposed for construction in '21, located at the intersection of 47th Avenue and 20th Street, which is immediately northwest of South Middle School, for reference. This project addresses concerns over pedestrian safety as middle school students require crossing the street. It's currently controlled by four stop signs, and the installation of a signalized, a traffic signal system would provide a much safer situation for those pedestrians. There is no streets pavement work associated with this, and all right turn lanes are already installed at that location. City engineering has estimated the cost to be $444,000 roughly, which would be paid for from Fund 4815, where $400,000 is currently budgeted from. With that, we request approval of plans and specifications and direction to advertise for bids.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Any comments or questions? In lieu of being able to raise that entire intersection so that we can put pedestrian walkways underneath, I think this is a great solution for the congestion at that location. Is there a motion by Mark to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Moving right along. Item 2.7, Plans and Specs for Project 8282, District 754, 2021 Millen Overlay. There's a lot of projects there. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, President Sandy. This project, the staff report met city council last week, where the- where the council approved creation of the special assessment district. Since then, the engineering department has completed the plans and specifications, and we're requesting approval for those tonight. I would like to add that Subproject 8282.6 was added to the list from last week. That is the overlay of South 30th Street. That's immediately west of the Altria Hospital. That section of road is recommended for overlay only. It is in deteriorating condition. It really requires a reconstruction. However, with the hospital still under construction, we would desire to wait until that construction work is complete to do a full reconstruct. So our recommendation at this point is to overlay South 30th Street funded by the city under Fund 4815 and include that with the asphalt mill and overlay contract for this year. So with that, staff recommends approval of plans and specifications pending any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions?
And clarification and direction to advertise for bid.
For bids, certainly. Do we have to reconstruct the road to the west of the hospital? So at some point, they're going to get back to construction, and they're just going to destroy it again. Right? So why put the money in anyway?
President Sandy, if you remember the discussion here a couple of years ago, we actually had scheduled 30th Street for reconstruction to kind of tie into the rest of the improvements with the facility. Again, that concept is still on the books. The problem that we foresee there is with the deteriorating condition of South 30th Street, we need to do something to get it to the point where we can get to reconstruction. And so this is basically a Band-Aid to bias, you know, probably three, four years, probably. There's still a lot of heavy loads that are going to end up coming down that road as they build the facility. So that's why we're not recommending special assessing it at this point. It's kind of a stopgap repair.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts?
It's a good question, good answer. I'll move approval.
Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Item 2.8, plans and specs for Project 8313, 2021 Greenway Rehab. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This project proposes to overlay a one-mile stretch of the Greenway Bike Path. The Greenway Bike Path was constructed approximately 15 years ago, and the asphalt is in various degrees of degradation. This would address a one-mile stretch that is in need of an overlay at this point in time. City cost estimate for this is $113,000, which would be funded from the Flood Protection Capital Maintenance Fund. We currently have $250,000 budgeted, but we feel it's prudent to only accomplish the scope that we've identified at this point in time. So this project would be bid along with the asphalt mill and overlay contract to get some economy of scale, some better pricing. So that would be put out for bid as one contract. So pending your questions, staff requests approval of plans and specifications and direction to proceed with advertisement for bids.
Good idea on bidding them together. Any comments or concerns about fixing the bike path and the Greenway?
Move approval.
Moved by Mock. Is there a second out there in Neverland?
Second.
Second by Weigel. Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.9, plans and specs for Project 8312, District 755, the 2021 concrete panel replacement and grind. Much-needed maintenance. Yes, Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you again. This project accomplishes a concrete panel replacement and surface microgrind for three sections of 24th Avenue South, totaling about 1.5 miles of that avenue. This project likewise met the council last week, in which the council created a special assessment district. Since then, we have, we in engineering have finished the plans and specifications. There are no substantial changes to the estimate or the specification or project scope since that meeting, so we are requesting approval of plans and specifications and direction to advertise for bid.
Any comments? Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Mock. If Mr. Veen were here, he would say that these are probably the most important things we can do to help our roads, to maintain them for the future. These are great investments of our funding. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 210, plans and specs for Project 8230, 2021 arterial, arterial, thank you, arterial street concrete rehab, Project 8281, 2021 concrete street repairs, and Project 8314, 2021 subdivision concrete rehab. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. These three projects, annually, we have a contract to repair concrete streets, whether it's a panel replacement, curb replacement, or associated work as we replace catch basins. It's our annual repair contract. These three projects will be, propose to be bid as one contract. They focus on three distinct areas: general street repairs, subdivision rehab, and these are subdivisions that are five to 10 years of age and have completed their initial build-out, construction where some damage occurs to pavement. And the third area is arterial streets rehab. We like to focus an effort on specific targeted arterial streets. At this point in time, we're looking at South Columbia Street tentatively for some work under this contract. Our total contract budget amount would be $350,000 amongst these three subprojects, most of which is funded from Fund 4815, and a minor portion is reimbursed from Funds 5300 Waterworks and 5400 Stormwater. With that, we are requesting approval of plans and specifications and direction to advertise for bid.
Any comments or questions? Moved by Mock. Is there a second out there?
Second.
By Weber. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Appreciate your heavy lifting tonight. Item 211, award bids for Project 8319, 2021 small bucket truck purchase. Ms. Grasser, you're buying a small bucket truck.
President Sandy, yes, we are, assuming you concur. You may have seen that bucket truck in operation with our electricians. Occasionally, you'll see them replacing street lights or working on the traffic signals, things like that. That's what we refer to as the bucket truck. It's actually, it's a truck and a lift together. We scheduled that for replacement this year in 2021. We took that out for bids. The current vehicle, I should note, is a 2007 model truck and lift. We did go out for bids, opened bids on January 14th. We received three bids. The low bidder was, came from ABM Equipment and Supply in the amount of $135,088. Of note, we did also have a couple of alternate bids in there. We did get a, an alternate bid of $488 to provide a basically two-speed control for the lift. It gives you a little more ability to fine-tune your operations, which is comforting when you're up in the air in that bucket. So if we, if council concurs in the award of that alternate, the total bid would be $135,576, and we would change that amount when we do our final report at the city council.
What's the alternative, Mr. Grasser?
We can just run with the one speed.
And what's the alternative about not buying the truck?
Well, the alternative of not buy, this vehicle otherwise needs quite a bit of maintenance and repair. The bucket, the lift mechanism also has to be certified, I think it's every year. And again, just given the age of this thing, it needs quite a bit. That's of note. That's why we are also going to declare, asking to declare it surplus. We'll see what we get for it at the end. When we talked to the manufacturers early on, it sounded like they were just really weren't interested in taking it in as a trade, and so that's why, otherwise, you would normally see a vehicle in as a trade-in. I also did have a discussion with Streets today, and, you know, we're all one city, and if we really don't get anything reasonable back on a trade-in or surplusing out, we may keep it and just reincorporate it back into our fleet. This, for us on the electrician's side, this is a vehicle that gets used every single day. I mean, it's always out there. Street Department, they use theirs more intermittently and maybe more so in the summertime, so we can probably, you know, get a little more extended life out of a used vehicle or a well-used vehicle like this. So.
And this is a safety issue as well, certainly.
Correct. Yeah, it's interesting going from the bottom up, looking at those buckets up in the air, it doesn't look very impressive, but if you ever, if you ever want to have a ride, they are kind of interesting, especially on a windy day. So you do want to have the safest equipment you can get.
Yep.
President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
Good question and good answer. I'll move approval.
Great. Moved by Weber, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Thanks to the engineering team for all you do. Under, last but not least, item 212, COVID-19 update. Ms. Swanson, good evening. Thanks for waiting out for us.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee at the hall. I have a really brief presentation, and I'll entertain questions if you have any. It's really exciting to be able to come and speak with you about vaccinations, which will be the focus of what I want to mention this evening, because we really do feel that their vaccination program, although it's starting out slow, will have the greatest promise in ending our pandemic. You have a dashboard before you, and I won't go through all the slides, but there are a number of really promising things, that being that the vaccination rate in the past week is starting to increase. We have very low hospitalizations due to COVID, and our new case rate remains very low, and our testing remains high. So it's really exciting to see that we have more things in the strengths category than in our threats category. And really, the only threat right now is that we could definitely use more vaccine. We have a low allocation to the state of North Dakota, and that could slow our quest to get to that 60% threshold that we want to get to, but I believe that things may start to improve here with additional manufacturing, and we may get more doses. It's important to note that we are vaccinating as soon as we get the vaccine, definitely use up all the doses that are allocated within one week. As you may recall, we have a partnership right now with Altria Health System to vaccinate. We're utilizing their resources of the hotline, and I want to mention that hotline number is 780-6358. And individuals in Phase 1B, which is in the first tier, individuals 75 and older can call that number to be assisted with getting an appointment for vaccination clinics that are being held for community residents at the Alara Center. We've held a number of them now, and they're running very smoothly. We're getting through as many people as possible, and including incorporating extra doses that we get from each vial of vaccine. So as we continue on this process, we're looking at what our rates will be, and each week, we will provide you with some information relative to the rates for our population that have one-dose coverage and then two-dose coverage, and then we've adjusted that for the ages at which people can actually be vaccinated, which for the most part is 16 and older. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have on the vaccines or any other topics related to COVID.
President Sandy, if I may?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you, Ms. Swanson, for that presentation. Yes, Mr. Weber?
Yes, I want to concur with that, echo that. Mrs. Swanson, thank you for your incredible, steadfast energy and efforts over this long, long year. I don't want to borrow trouble, but under threats, I just need to ask, these mutations that we're hearing about, could you speak to that, please?
Yes, President Sandy, members of the committee, and Mr. Weber, we are hearing much more about the threats of the variants that are occurring. I just heard of a new one today now, which is from Brazil, which has shown up in the U.S. as well. I prefer to call them by the countries where they have been identified. So we have one that's in Great Britain, one in South Africa, and now one first identified in Brazil. Each one of them has a more complex name than that. From all indications, these variants are producing more disease in terms of their transmissibility, so it can infect more people, but they're not necessarily more infectious in terms of causing significant disease or death. So that's the good news. Also, the good news is that it's, at least right now, we believe that the vaccines will still work for these variants. I did hear today that Moderna, however, is going to start looking at how effective their vaccine will be against all these variants, so they may look at a booster or something like that in the future. And I'm sure that new products that come to market, such as Johnson &amp; Johnson and AstraZeneca, will also be testing their vaccines on some of those mutations of this virus as well. So much more to come. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag in terms of the variants, but this is how coronaviruses work. And with more genomic testing, we'll probably have a better picture, too.
Very good. So good news, no more deadly. Good news. The vaccines seem to be effective on these mutations as the original. But concern about, we must continue to practice all of our safety measures so that we don't have numbers run out of control again before we get everyone, enough people vaccinated, right?
That's absolutely correct. So the mutations are really what's probably the number-one reason why we need to continue all those mitigation efforts, social distancing and washing and wearing masks, absolutely, until we have, you know, significant number of people vaccinated and our case numbers remain low.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Swanson? I have a general question, Ms. Swanson. How do people know where they fall on the vaccination list? For example, if my mother calls the Altria hotline and gets on the list, how does she have any idea? Who manages the list, and can you call someone and find out if you're number 4,200 on the list or no?
President Sandy, the list is being managed right now by the Altria hotline. So where a person is on the list would be a question that they would have to get answered by that phone number. Right now, we're vaccinating those 75 and older, and then we'll move down the phases in, or excuse me, the tiers within Phase 1B. So if a person is younger than 75 but older than 65 and has some health conditions, they would be next in line. So that helps people a little bit, but as far as what number they are, we don't actually have a really clear way to predict that, that I'm aware of, but certainly a call to the hotline might help to clarify that. We certainly want to do a lot more to promote vaccinations in the future, too, but what we're finding right now is we have really great uptake in this community, so we have way more people interested in getting vaccinated than we have vaccine for.
One other quick question. As somebody who's tested positive for antibodies and is in perfect physical condition, should I be waiting to let other people get the vaccine before me, or should I, when my group comes up, should I get in line?
President Sandy, that's a really good question, and I'll try to answer it to the best of my ability, and then there may be additional information that I can provide. Originally, we were told that people who have tested positive or who have had COVID or have COVID antibodies should still get the vaccine. However, now knowing that we have such a limited supply, there may be a reason why individuals in that situation would wait and let others step forward. We know natural immunity does provide some protection, but we just don't know how long that protection lasts completely. So vaccination is still recommended, but you might want to let others go ahead of you who haven't had COVID and who have risk factors that will put them at risk.
Very good. Thank you very much for that clarification for me. I very much appreciate it. Ms. Mock, a question?
Kind of a similar question.
Kind of a similar question, Ms. Swanson. If you know that you're not in one of these early groups, should you be calling the Altrua hotline to put yourself on a list, or should you wait until perhaps we get past these first surges and further down on the list?
Madam Vice President, I think it would be wise to wait, because it could be several weeks before you hear anything. So I think it would be best if individuals looked at the tiers and see where they fit in and call as we are starting to release those tiers or getting next to the next tier. We also know that once we get sufficient supplies of vaccine, we'll be able to vaccinate in some of those congregate settings, utilizing all of our partners, and then eventually there may be additional settings where people can be vaccinated, perhaps in a more convenient location for them. We expect that we'll be doing some large community clinics for quite a while, but eventually the supplies will be pretty sufficient, that it'll be available many more places as well.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Any other comments or questions for the Director of the Health Department? Hearing none. Thank you so much again. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the good of the order? I'd like to say, past my condolences, it's very unfortunate, Mr. Veen's mother passed away within the last few days, and so he wasn't able to be here tonight due to family commitments. So certainly have him and his family in my thoughts. Any other comments for the good of the order? Hearing none. Ms. Mock moves we adjourn. I can read Mr. Weber's nod. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you.[1753.76][1753.76]